I'll call this meeting the Westland planning zoning commission to order. And appreciate all the people in the audience and members as well. And Leslie, you have lots of experience in taking role and taking notes. Would you be able to sit in for us tonight as our secretary? That's wonderful. So let's.
Person forward.
Here.
Commission number hours.
Here.
Ben Sroy.
Here.
Here.
Power.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Paul Shatson.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve the. Yeah. And I would seek a voice approval of that agenda or any changes, any additions to that agenda. Second, and I was in favor, I. Okay. The first item is seven minutes from the last meeting we had back in June break. And did anyone see any additions, changes, improvements to those? None. I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. Second. Second, with the second from James, all of us in favor, I. Who's opposed, no. I didn't. For, in the original statement, is. To look at. The proposed change of the metals part three. To the category of planned unit development. And I sent out to everybody of the. May the R statutes are. Ordinances, you know, with planning units development, just to remind you of what they are and so forth. Plus a little information piece on how this is. I think. In that, we're having that available to you. I do very interested. Yeah. Any information from those who are opposing about why you'd like to change.
Good evening, prime up with accent calls. Yeah, so this in front of you is a rezoning, as we mentioned. It's currently RB one, if some of you might recall, that was a rezone, oh, several years ago when the metals first started looking at part three and part four. Created that RB one zone in this, as well as a few of those that were not part four. As I'm talking with city staff a little further in terms of what. The developers looking to do here. It sounded like PUD process was a better way to go here because of flexibility, number one, with some of the units and density. And just, just as true to the mixed use that we're looking to put in in that quarter. It is not yet set on exactly what is going in on each of those lots. So what we see in front of me is that concept breakout in terms of lots. You've seen two different public streets, some lineups with that rhythm with the cul-de-sac. As well as one with that through street that Kurt Brown goes down to Main Street. And honestly, either one of those function that way with PUD. So certainly can answer any questions you might have. Gary Worley is here, representing the developer, and Chris Wood is the owner of the land as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? I think the point about providing additional flexibility is a good one. This will be the third PUD that we have in town. First one's going ahead with instructions. Second one, the coal plant area. We have hopes for as well before too much longer. So. The, the whole front, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm holding death, I'm having a really hard time understanding, you know. Can you take your mask off? It's like, I can hear you.
I.
I apologize, but I just, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can, I feel a little strange having it on, but. I'm ancient to see. Well, if I could look better just by taking a mask on, that's pretty good. I turned down a speaking engagement just today for a. Conference that's being held next month, simply because I'm, I'm, I'm not. Uh, I get too anxious about going to those sorts of things with the COVID spread, so. Okay.
Appreciate it. So any questions? Guess what I, I need to clarify, or that's the correct thing is. PUD, when I got that information Sunday. What I'm looking at is, and I talked with Terry. When I looked at it, all the, the steps that we were requiring, it was kind of like. Okay, I hadn't heard about this before, but I know, you know, it's there. And to what degree, my biggest concern was what kind of timeframe are we talking about this? You know, if I'm doing a PUD, you know, I. I would, I was kind of confused between the two we have here, ordinance mending code of ordinance regarding the creation of the plan PUD. And then we have a plan PUD alternative for the city. So I'm, I was kind of looking at both of them, I'm kind of, kind of confused. But then I was just taking worst case scenario and I'm looking at when I do my. Pre-application meeting, my prepetition meeting, the prepetition concept plan meeting. I. Plan unit development sites submitted, am I looking at three months, four months, five months? Because I'm gonna tell you right now, if it's, if I can't turn dirt until August, it can't happen. I just can't do it. So do I go back to RB one and ask for a few variances on the buildings there where I can get started three months, four months sooner? But so. I, I'm lost which way to go. I can't give you a plan that shows the buildings. That, that we're putting on, I can't give you a concept to show you a sketch of what the building's gonna look like or, or a floor plan. Because I don't know what's going out there. I'm speculating on, on five lots. And three of them I've got very strong people, the other two, I don't know what's going in there. So am I gonna, if I don't present that to you folks. Do I not get to submit that? Do I, do I miss that presentation that, that? You know, the pre-application meeting or the prepetition concept, because I don't have a building on those plots. That's my biggest concern. If that's the case, and I don't have the leeway to leave it just a blank slate, which we presented. Then I'm gonna have to go to RB one, and if I go to RB F one, I'm probably gonna have to tell Chris, thanks for, you know, sitting in the corner with me. Because I just can't wait till August to turn dirt. I just can't do it. And as far as what. Last time I was here and meetings with the, with the council. Is everything that I've talked about bringing in and doing is in line with your comprehensive plan from 2010, 2013, and 2018. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to give you what you want. But I can't give you everything that you want, if that makes any sense. So I'm just wanting to clear the air here, and I asked, asked Brian to come and, and talk because. He understands West Branch a little more than I do, but I still think it's a great project. I want to make it a nice project for you, but if it's gonna be August before I can turn dirt, I, I can't do that. Because then I'm talking utility companies and you know what I mean? So, you know, it's just.
Just, just for a little more background, the. The information that came out in 2018 was preceding the establishment of the ordinance. And it was essentially to describe what a PUD does and how it works and so forth. The ordinance is what, what holds. And so that's the process there. The whole idea of the PUD is essentially to free up innovative thinking. Essentially to speed things along, not, not to delay them. And I think that this commission has been very willing to meet and discuss and give thoughts and so forth. In as early a way as possible. That's why revenue likes meeting.
Right, right, no, I appreciate it.
So I don't see a PUD as anything that should bother anyone. It instead should be a way of getting a good result in as quick a manner as possible.
Right, and like I said, I was playing devil's advocate, figuring 30 days between each one. But if we can have, you know, we can, you know, have your meetings. Or I don't know if we have to have a meeting such as this, or if there's a different type of meeting. But if I can expedite it, you know, and doesn't take me four or five months, then. You know, I, I would take a look at, but I'm really. It, it's a deadline, we've got so many uncertainties since the last time I talked to you folks. I mean, and I'm scared to death, but I still think it's a good project. Do I want to, you know, sit on it for five years? No, I'm hoping not. So that's why, you know, when I talked to you a month ago was, you want to know when to what start? And I said tomorrow, I was kind of joking, but really I wish I had, because then I'd be too far into it to back out, so. But I just wanted to kind of clear the air, I, I was confused between the two. But it's like I say, if it's August before I can turn dirt, I just can't do it, so.
Roger on the timer.
So the timeframe would be. The even rezone has to have a public hearing before this.
It does.
Which would be what, maybe two weeks?
So we would hit that March 20th, yeah.
Yep.
Or 20 seconds.
But the one thing, yeah. Then it gets put into council, which would take three readings, but we can compress that to.
One.
Two readings.
Two.
So that's, that's a month right there. That's, that's a month, then two meetings is a month.
So. Can. Can what you want to accomplish be accomplished with the current zoning? As opposed to going through this rezoning process, which that takes in and of itself sometime? Or is your project, I'm, I'm sitting in the dark, I'm not really sure what kind of an idea this you're talking about, so I'm kind of vague in my questioning, but. Is it, is it really necessary to do the rezoning for you to do the project that you want to do?
And that, that's what I explained, if I could get a variance, like, you know, in RB one, I can do a 12 plex per acre. Like, you know, since I have three acres there, can I, can I, or two and a half acres, can I get maybe. Fifteen or sixteen per acre to utilize? You know, what the infrastructure that we're putting in there? The difference of the infrastructures in the last year, you know, are 50, 60% more than what they were. I mean, it's just, so we're all trying to, in a sense. If we go to the PUD, you know, we can shorten our setbacks, front yards or side yards or parking or whatever. But in, what I'm looking at is every time. You have to hire your engineers to come in and do the plans for every little meeting or make a change. Because somebody doesn't like it, but it's been approved, you know, the meeting before, it gets expensive. And that's, and, and as it gets expensive and then changed, then we add another change, be it two weeks or be it four weeks, whatever the case is. I'm not really familiar on timelines yet, but, you know. And then. Talked a lot about designs, designs, you know, do we have a design standard? Anybody have a design standard that, or we just, do we bring in a design that we think would be?
I think that's the answer.
And then it gets shot down type thing, you know, I. I'm, I'm just trying to expedite as best I can, I mean. But if I could use RB one with a variance from a 12 plex to a 16 plex, you know. I'm more than happy to do that, it's just to get the numbers to work with today's numbers, it's just not doing it. And, and, and talk, rentals aren't what they are in the Iowa City Liberty Soulland areas. They will come once the platex here.
Of course, seeking variances also takes time. The members here, where are we to set a public hearing tonight? Would it be possible to have that public hearing next week? What folks have had a pass go.
I'm not opposed to it.
Go, so I think, I think we can speed that up. And then pass.
There's a published, there's a publication requirement of seven, not less than seven and not more than 10 days for rezoning, so we can't push it up. The earliest we can do a public hearing would be the 20th. Same goes for once it, once it goes through P and Z, then we have to meet the same requirement for the city council. Even if our city council, we'll hit this right, if we can't make the April 4th deadline, we probably won't. It may have to wait until the 18th.
The one, the one thing I do, do want to stress is. You know, the, the, in terms of being flexible and innovative area that when we first met, that's certainly on the same page with you on that. But there still would have to be a site review process, whether it's a preliminary and final plot and then the site plan. So regardless, there still would need to be an internal meeting between Dave and possibly Terry and myself and Leslie and Matt Goodell and Public Works. Just to make sure we know where infrastructure's going in. So. In terms of telling you, I guess, it being done by August, I can't give you that promise until I know what you're bringing to the table. In terms of fighting for it to be innovative and flexible, I'm certainly more than willing to publicly bat for you, but. I can't make you that promise it will be ready by August until we know what's got coming.
If we're doing the PUD.
Correct, and then with your question about a variance. You would, you'd have to go to the board of adjustment, and there's still a public hearing requirement for that as well. So it's not really much faster either way you go, it's what type of development you want. Do you want those 30 plexes? Do you want the flexibility or not? Or is it more, RB one is not an unflexible zone. It, it doesn't say it can't be mixed there.
I think what I want is what you outlined in your comprehensive plan. We're doing that, I can't tell you exactly what building, but I'm giving you what you want in the comprehensive plan. In some way or form, we're doing it, but. You know, RB one doesn't let me do exactly what the, the comprehensive plan says. PUD doesn't really let me do the same thing, I mean, it's got to be a mix between the two, and that's just what I'm trying to say. I'm kind of confused which way to go, because I've got the good with one, I've got the bad with one, I've got good with the other, and I've got the bad with the other. I just have to decide which way is gonna be the quickest way to go, but it's basically the same part of it.
Well, if you have certain zones, say lots, that you know are gonna go first, you want to be first. Maybe that, that you have to keep those RB one. And do your site plan, you're ready to roll.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you know.
The northern half could be the, the PUD portion.
The northern half, right, I mean, it's right now, it could go either way, I mean, I. It's, it's tough when you speculate, it's tough when people start calling and saying, we want this, we want that. You know, you have a plan in your head, what you want to do, and now you have all these other people wanting, which that's okay. You know, they want to come and spend money in the city, and that's what we want to do. I, I want to, want to build what people want. And the people that are, that are asking are from the community, I mean. So whatever they want to do, that's what I want to give them and give you, but I. Just lost which way to go, it's gonna be a longer time. It's gonna be a longer timetable one way than I have to go the other way.
Terry, RB one allows R three, it refers to R three, I remember.
Yes.
Right, which is 12, 12 units, but it just says multi-family building, 12 units, it's not necessarily a density.
No, no, it's not, no, it's not. It, it refers you to, okay, it says under area regulations, it says multi-family, same as the R three. So you go to your R three zoning. And it says, actually, it says nine to 12 family. Looks like you need 1800 square feet per unit. So.
Otherwise, we put a special exception.
Yeah. Because the R three permitted uses are multi-family up to 12 units. But you can apply for a special exception, which isn't guaranteed for anything over 12 units.
So it's not a very incentive special.
It's a special exception, that's. But anything over, you know, you've got, anything over 12 units, gotta have, keep adding 1800 square feet.
But there's no restriction on how many buildings with 12 units.
No, I mean, well, the thing is, is if you, if you went ahead and built townhouses.
Right.
I mean, you can put as many as you want, because they're, they're considered technically single families.
Dave, correct me on this too, and maybe you too, Leslie, if he goes to our RB one route. And he asks for a variance or special use, I'm sorry, special use exception. If he gets granted it, doesn't his site plan come back to this board regardless? So regardless, you're coming to this board. And I guess I foresee this board as having more experience and more foresight on future development. But it's whether you guys feel it meets the merit of the planned unit development. The way Gary and I originally talked, and we still are talking, I feel it does meet that. But I think regardless, Gary's coming this way. And so it really comes down to what your commitment is, Gary, in terms of RB one. There's not a huge difference outside of if you want a little bit more density, or you want a little bit more flexibility. This board's probably going to be the better one in terms of the foresight and what the community is looking for. Versus board of adjustments mostly about, is it okay to, to break the law or get a variance? I guess that's where I see this board being a little bit more understanding of what you're trying to do versus board of adjustments.
Which, you know, I can, I can live with that, I mean, it's just, like I said, I was playing. I was looking at devil's advocate, are we talking 30 days in between each one of these things? And unfortunately, some of the other municipalities, there's no give, no leeway, and you folks have been very good at giving the leeway. I just wanted to. Identify what that timeframe is between the presentations, is it 30 days? Or is it two weeks, is, you know, what, so. But I, I, I understand more, it's a little easier now to make decisions. Based on the fact that, you know, several people have said that it's gonna be about the same amount of time. Well, I, you know, we're looking two months instead of four or five months, I feel a lot better with that.
Leslie, you said that it takes seven to 10 days before the holding.
The public hearing has to be published, not more than seven, not less than 10 days.
Okay, so where, where would that take us to?
I, I said that backwards. I said that backwards, I said that backwards. So, but then again, so public hearing has to be held in the PNC. And if approved, it goes on to the city council.
Right.
Rarely do our meetings line up that we can do a dual notice, which we can put it at the paper once, with both, with the meeting be at that close. We're not gonna make it, I don't believe, I think I already looked at the calendar, so I probably, I think that's earliest we can do, the public hearing at. City council will be on April 18th, and after that, public hearing, assuming there's no. There's no reason that the council shouldn't, you know, really, we don't have a lot of public, negative public comment. Then we would do the first reading of the ordinance. Then typically, it takes three readings and we have meetings twice a month. Sometimes the council wants to condense them, sometimes they don't, you can't assume they're going to, so you need to plan on six more weeks. Once the rezoning is done, you still can't put the shovel on the ground, because we haven't seen a preliminary class. So you, I, I wouldn't expect that you're gonna get anything dirt turned this year unless you're just doing some grading. Because there's a lot more that has to happen, you have to have a site plan and a preliminary class and a final class, and all of that takes time. Everything comes to P and Z first, then it goes to council. And that goes that way, so. Check police development, we started in 2019, where, you know, as you see, infrastructure's in. That just got done in the fall, and, you know, building is, it, it, it's not gonna, it's not a quick process, no matter what. But we keep moving, we, we accommodate schedules as we can, but we expect information, good information, so we can not waste everybody's time.
We always try to be accessible and approachable too. But I think until we see exactly what's coming in, I can't tell you how soon it's gonna get done. So we, you know, and I know it takes time to recruit and get investment from other people. But in terms of rezoning, I think you could, if you're prepared and ready to go. But in terms of getting the preliminary, final flat, the site plan, that stuff, we won't be able to view that until you know more specifics.
But again, I just can't do a site plan that, that shows the buildings that are going on. I want to get the road, you know, build it and they will come type attitude. I want to get the roads in, the infrastructure, the utilities, everything, so people can see what they have. Because people, you're not gonna buy a car from a car dealer unless you see the actual product. And that's what we're trying to do, is get the product there for people to come. But if I wait, I can have all the pictures in the world, but people. People will not buy something unless they see it actually starting, you know, just like.
And I'm not an engineer, Dave can chime in too, but he may have certain questions for that to happen. There are certainly areas where you put in the infrastructure first, that you sell the land. But we still would have to see a site plan that's part of our zoning.
But it's PUD, we don't need to see the buildings. We do need to.
RB, RB one, he wouldn't.
RB one, we don't need to see that.
RB one, that would save you time, because the public improvements on this are easy.
And the plating's easy, and the construction drawing is easy.
But if it's more than a 12 plex, then the site won't even.
For, for one building.
Correct.
Correct, you could have more than that density.
But, but the thing is, is if, if he knows somewhere where the, the multi-families are going, there are more than 12 units. Why couldn't he go ahead and just leave it at RB one until he's got some takers on the lots for them? Or the backing for the multi-families, and then just PUD that? Right, yes, question.
I was actually just gonna say something similar to what Terry was saying, which is that if you get your, if you keep it RB one, just bring us your. You know, site plan for your, not the buildings going on, but just get your public improvements in. I think it seems like everyone here is in favor of what you're trying to do, you won't need resistance if you have to run through a longer process to rezon PUD later.
I think that's what Brian said, just a generic, you know, you've got, you know, what we're, we're looking at doing. And if we need, you know, we'll talk more, if we have to update them or whatnot, but there are people that definitely want, that, you know, they're talking about the multi-family, but they can't get the numbers to me. And the council's seen, you know, one of our. People on the independent living or the cluster homes. So, you know, that's on lot four and lot five, lot three, hopefully, you know, we still have interest in lot three. So lot one and lot two are kind of out there, but. They do have people that are interested, but again, they want to see, they want to see the ground, they want to see what this road's gonna look like, what these plots will look like after the grading. That's what I'm saying, I can't, I can't give you a site plan that has the buildings and the, and the pretty pictures and all that. I just can't do it, because I don't know what's going there until I start to, people see it's actually.
I don't think you need to. I don't think you need to, if you don't rezon with the PUDs.
If it stays RB one, RB one, starting to get the one under site.
Next meeting for us, bring us your, bring us your preliminary plot or whatever is required, and we'll, let's get that for you, you can start your work.
A little better now, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a request for rezoning before us, unless our request is to be. Essentially removed from the agenda.
As well, prove it, and we'll talk with Gary offline, and then we don't have to put the public numbers out there.
Okay, I guess I would. Just to repeat, the, the commission, I'm sure, is happy to expedite things as much as our regulations allow.
Are we going to be dealing with rezoning or not?
Well, I think it's on the agenda, let me, let me make a motion. That we approve rezoning to a PUD.
Set a public here.
And, and set a public hearing, yes.
Should be the next meeting.
Twenty seconds, seems to be the earliest, yes. Right a second. Right any seconds. Well, let's have a roll call vote, Leslie.
Okay, did we get a motion?
Yes, I, I moved to, yes. Yes.
Hours.
Yes.
Ben Sroy.
Yes.
No.
And power?
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Uh, next item is for the Sierra Park subdivision. And we have the authority to either recommend that this final plan be approved. Decide not to review this final plan, or we can look at our conditions on this final plan. And Dave, do you have any? A lot of possible conditions? And Dave, do you have any, uh, thought of, uh, possible conditions?
The condition we were considering done was to preserve a corridor in the event that Forest Street was extended in the future. That they don't construct any buildings in that area. And I believe an agreement has been drafted to that effect and submitted to the city.
Thank you. So that would suggest that we do have conditions that, uh, that our city engineer wishes to base on this. And, uh, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the final plot with the conditions. That the.
That Dave says. And there's a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed. It's approved. Um, now. Adam did raise in the last meeting a question about, um, this particular plan. And it was whether we have any particular feelings as a commission on where the future growth of the city could go. Our comprehensive plan did not take up land use changes. Um, that was seen as essentially requiring a good deal more discussion before we got to any kind of recommendations in the comprehensive plan. The city, the Cedar County Comprehensive Plan, which was done about the same time that our comprehensive plan was done. Uh, suggested that there were some growth corridors, uh, for West Branch, primarily to the north of the city. I was involved in that, uh, that Cedar County plan. And I had rather different ideas. I had thought that probably the most reasonable growth corridor. Uh, city was to the western edge in Johnston County. Uh, I have no idea what anyone else's, I, feelings are about this. Um, maybe Adam has, uh.
What's your question?
My, my question is about, uh, a, a question that, uh. Adam brought up in our last, uh, commission meeting. And that was whether we had any ideas as a commission as to where the growth pattern of the city might be. His point was that we've, uh, done a fair amount of industrial development, especially full site, uh, gets developed. And, uh, we will at some point run out of land within the city boundaries. Especially for residential development.
Well, one point in the P and S, when I was on the P and Z, we pretty much outlined the entire north. The West Branch three residential grow anywhere spare game. Um. South of town is going to be industrial, commercial. Depending how much stuff people like that.
When, when was our last land use plan done?
The land use plan?
Yeah.
I think about when I was.
I think so too.
Six years ago or more.
Well, more than that. It was on that commission also. And, um, certainly that's one possible growth area. I don't know what the utilities suggest. Uh, I don't know, uh, how the sewer system might, uh, might progress in order to do that. The, uh, the street infrastructure and so forth. But, um, I think it's really time that we had that kind of a discussion. And, uh, had at least some idea that we can jointly agree to on the appropriate directions. Again, I don't think we do that right now, but, uh, I think Adam's question is very good one.
Dave and I just discussed internally at some point on doing it. Well, we'd have to involve our infrastructure. I guess my opinion is I don't want to label just one side of town. Uh, because that can really inflate the cost of land if we're only going to grow on one side of town. Um, so it'd be nice to have, you know, a couple of options to go to. Not every farmer wants to sell their land.
Of course.
So, uh, but we need to sit down internally first before we present something to you. And that's going to take some time. So. Just keep it in the back of your mind what your thoughts are. So.
I think we could have a work session on exactly that. Okay, well, the next. Is, it makes us to the park size goals. And we received a, uh, one more plan. Well, they changed to the subdivision. So feel free to tell us what's going on. Saw some construction taking place out there today.
Yeah, we're getting that going. So basically what we did, and if you look at that platform that we have originally, is that when we looked at the layout of the buildings. Um, from the original. Uh, get buildings out more toward the street instead of parking lot. And the layout was as such that I was crossing my parking. So when I went back to look at, if I sell off individual buildings and, and lots. While I was going to do this, it was going to be confusing as to who had what portions of what parking lot. Uh, of course, we'll have ingress and ingress and cross parking agreements across all of this. Anyway, but it was more of when we went to look at the construction, the first building also, I was like, okay, how am I going to divide this parking lot? Well, it wasn't just for me, it was also for the buyer that's coming in. How much am I responsible for in the parking lot? Or what's my portion of? So what we did is to clean it up. We actually, there's some kind of different lines, but we've actually broken it up. Which you'll see, uh, lot thirteen, we've got two later. We're coming in with that too. But we took lot thirteen and fourteen and divided them up into five lots. And we submitted this first one with these two lots separately. So they're actually fully separated. So I can sell, say this building here and they have this lot. And so they're responsible for their parking and this person's responsible for their parking. So just kind of cleaned up what we had before, because before it was kind of, we had parking lots running all over. So just made it a little bit better. Plus, we were able to shift the buildings more toward the exit. Um, and take them away from more of the residential areas, which left us with more space on that side. Um, to, if we want to shelter some of that area, we can burn and, and put bushes there and kind of put some green space out in that area. Rather than having before, we had the building, a building right on that. It was like eight or nine thousand square foot commercial. So just kind of clean that up and so clean the entrance up rather than driving and looking at that building right there. Kind of, it'll be open area instead and then we can put the buildings up on the access or on the ramp, which is of course almost. Exposure. And it also helped us clean up the signs because that was one of the first questions is, okay, if I'm tucked back in and I don't have exposure to the ramp. Where people can see my building and I can put a sign on the back, like where am I going to put a large stand up sign? And I'm like, well, we're not going to. Be able to put it out front and then we're going to have all these things that allow us to kind of clean that thought process to.
Well, I think, uh, in, in particular, the idea of having more, uh. Vegetation, more screaming and so forth. So comments from the commission.
I would just mention, um, I think on your signage, we probably just had a recent discussion about it, maybe you're aware that maybe not. Make sure whatever. Or it's already drafted or that.
That's HCI zone.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I mean, that's part of what we really don't want is a one foot three foot sign and, you know, on the edge of a residential.
But you do need something for.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll have them on the farm of buildings. And I just, as far as with the access to the back on these buildings that will run along the interstate. Um, um, will work out better because what we have, again, once, once we sit at thirteen, it'll kind of pull itself together. It's how we line this building up. Just gave it more. So everything is, you know, parking lot more this way, which then of course like it's sheltered the edge of that parking lot with trees and bushes. Can clean that up and really kind of take some of the parking lot, you know, steering the parking lot over.
Okay, any other comments from the commission members? Or staff comments? Gary?
No, I think it's great that you split this up so you can sell them all. Now, is there going to be some type of covenants or anything on this regarding your signs?
Uh, we'll go through all of that. Yeah, we probably will. We'll have that discussion as far as what's on the building. And, uh, we've already kind of addressed that with a few people that have called. And that, that kind of what spurred my thought process to start with is we had a call probably four, five months ago from, I'm not at the building and they were like, well, we need signage or are we going to put it? Yeah, so we kind of went back and rethought the process. So, yeah, we'll have to do that all that stuff.
Cause I know we'll probably have something also thereafter. Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, you know, a residential property.
Yeah, and, and if any, and if anything, if they, we do go out front, like they're probably more rise, you know, something that we would see. Um, that is going to be on the ground more.
More monument signs.
Yeah, it's more monument style out front, which again, maybe kind of go next to with greenery and bushes and stuff and keep it low instead. So.
Other comments? Well, I think from the comments, it sounds like, uh, this change is a desirable one that we can get behind. Thank you very much. Next item is old business, you have any old business? I don't think so. Um, city staff reports.
Uh, just two things to be aware of. I have reached out. This has been a council discussion. I have reached out to other communities, not with much luck. But in terms of maybe when we're talking future growth. To try and, I guess, vary up some, some of the monotonous residential growth. So not, so when I'm talking design standards, I'm not talking these super specifics. I'm just talking. From council's perspective, you know, maybe every three homes, you know, and maybe in our new developments we will have in five years, that those would be. Have a different floor plan or some sort of different coloring. Um, for those of you that know, I live on Dawson. Um, a lot of them look the same. I'll drive past my house all the time. My dogs don't know which house is my house. So not that that's a big, big issue, but I think in terms of West Branch trying to be a historic town or to be a little bit different than. Maybe you're Tiffin or North Liberty, maybe something to look into without being over. Zealous of the fact that we do have to compete with land and construction costs. But I think, I think there's, hopefully there's something in between that's. Both doable. So just know you may get some drafts on some smaller ordinances or, or design standards, I guess, um, but. It should be light. Um, and then. I guess Roger can say as much as he wants about crawl site, but it just seems like things are moving in a positive direction.
Yeah. Positive direction. The full side.
That's where the.
Next to the West Branch.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, well, that's definitely good to hear. And maybe we'll get some more information the next time we, next time we need. Any additional points or comments that you would like to have? Very none. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Say, motion in second. All those in favor? Aye.